The meeting from last night, 24th of... what is it? Sorry. From the 24th of July reopened. Technically, we're still in the same meeting. And I would like to... we've been very kindly joined by, once again, Reverend Bruce Hemmings from Liverpool Presbyterian Church. So if we can ask you to please pray for us again. We won't be doing the National Anthem or anything like that because I think, once again, we are still technically in the same meeting. And I just want to share with everyone whilst I would like to think that your prayers and prayers of many other people were answered in that we just had our first hearing on the court case and the New South Wales Government has withdrawn or has taken down the report from the Officer Log Government website. Could be a technical difficulty, not too sure. Maybe someone's taken their data, but we don't know. Anyway, I'd like to invite everyone to please stand for the prayer of council. Thank you, Reverend.
Praise God, you'll be sick of the sight of me and I'm sorry for that, having to put up with me again, but thank you again for your hospitality and I praise God that you've had some good news. It's always good to have a win, isn't it? Don't you think? And I certainly am praying for you guys. You must be so tired and so fatigued and I didn't think I'd be coming three times, but God bless you. We acknowledge God has created this world and everything that's in it and with respect, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present. The Cabragueal clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by the peoples of the Darawal and Darug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to good government in our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their background, race or creed. We affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, for our mayor, our councillors, our staff at council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we do want to thank you for our council and we thank you for the many good men and women who are working really hard to make local government work in this area. Father, we thank you for the fact that so many things get done and are unseen by most people because they just happen. And we know that things don't just happen. It's good management, a lot of hard work, a lot of planning and preparation, sound financial management. And Father, we thank you for everybody involved with Liverpool council, from the mayor through to the most menial worker. And Father, we thank you that everybody works together to make this council work. Father, we thank you for everybody that's involved and lives in this area. We know it's a fast-growing area. The population is growing at an incredible rate. The demands on services are growing. And Father, we thank you for everybody that comes to live here and we pray that they would find a wonderful home and a warmth and a welcome in this area. We pray for the development of the airport, which will soon be open. Father, we do pray for our council. We thank you for the wins that they've had today. And Father, we do pray that common sense would prevail and that council would be able to focus on the job that it does best, running this council and making sure that the services we need are provided well. Father, may they know, may everyone on this council know, that they are held in our prayers with our best wishes. And Father, we pray your blessing on each one and we commit this meeting to you now in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Reverend Hammond, for your heartfelt prayers and words of encouragement and guidance for us and hopefully our city may prosper well. Thank you, thank you very much. All right, councillors, we have councillor Caliendo who is online. We'll do this as a normal meeting, but we'll say all those are happy for it to be online. Favor against, I declare it carried. Move the mayor, second to deputy mayor. Councillor Green is an apology. She apparently has tested positive for COVID. We wish her all the very best. And councillor Kinnie is also an apology today. So can we have someone move that they be accepted? Move deputy mayor, second to councillor Rhodes. Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favor against, declare it carried. There's no confirmation of minutes. We have the same declarations. Let's once remind everyone that we are still technically in the same meeting. All right. So... All right, now we've... so going off of the order list, if everyone has it there. Does everyone have the new printout of... Does everyone have one of these? So we already resolved to have, I think, that one at the end of the booklet, the Plan 09, but we'll do that at the end.
Sorry, Mayor, I don't have a copy of the new order list. If that can be sent to me, I would appreciate it.
Yep. Give us one minute and you will have it.
Thank you.
We'll just wait a moment until... can you just let us know once you have it, councillor Caliendo?
Thank you, I've never received the order.
All right, great. So Plan 09, we resolved to deal with that at the end of the meeting. So are there any presentations by councillors? No? Okay. All right, so let's move into the confidential items. Conf 01.
Happy to move that way.
Page 810, recommendation of page 811, move councillor Rhodes and the item... Second to councillor Hall? Or question? Do we still have a second? Second to councillor Moon? All right, did you want to speak for your motion, councillor Rhodes?
Well, look, it's very, very important for council to acquire land such as this, which is necessary for road widening. And we've already learnt our lessons, so it's a matter of acquiring the land as soon as we can. That's all, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. Councillor Hall, your call?
Yes, I have a question, probably to the traffic person who put this report up. I have a query as to why that land is needed when further on... It just doesn't seem right that that section is required and either further on or further back is not. If that affects the width of the road, why is it only that section and not other sections as well? It just doesn't seem right to me, but there must be a logical explanation. Sorry?
Because the property manager isn't available, but certainly he would have been given advice that these pieces of property are required for the intersections that the report is talking about at Benira Road. So I can get back to you with a more complete answer sometime later.
That's fine.
It's page 813 of the big book of...
The big, big... okay. Book three.
Have we already purchased that? Why is that necessary?
All right, thank you, everyone. Sorry about that. So just for everyone's reference, we're on book three, the very, very thick... Good, everyone has it?
I didn't have it.
Thank you. All right. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Everyone happy to proceed? If not, if there's no further discussion, I will put the motion, all those in favor against, I declare it carried. Next item is conf 02. Page 817 with the recommendation of page 818.
Move the recommendation.
Moved councillor Hadid, second to councillor Rhodes. Any discussion?
I don't have a problem with that, that's the opposite side.
If there's no discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favor. Against, I declare it... Were you voting for it, councillor Caliendo? Yep, I declare it unanimous.
I have a question.
Can we just give me one second until... because I can see that the email's going now to councillor Caliendo, who also had questions. And I will just remind anyone with questions that we're still in open session of a confidential report. If you need to go into closed, please let me know before we start asking questions. What about if we just adjourn for five minutes until 17:45? Councillor Caliendo will get her paperwork and then you can both decide whether you need to ask in confident in closed session. All right, we'll be back at 17:45. Have questions?
Yes, I satisfied my questions whilst everybody was doing their thing. So no questions, thank you.
Okay, no worries. Councillor Caliendo, when you're ready, let me know.
Yes, so just in relation to the suppliers identified in the report, have any of them previously conducted work for council in the last 10 years?
Through the CEO?
Thank you, deputy mayor. We'll have to take that on notice. That period of time would take some investigation.
Okay, and could you also have a look at what the outcome, if they have conducted work for council, what the outcome of that work was? I'm just mindful that it would be helpful to have, you know, as part of the information that comes to us, whether there has been issues with contractors or suppliers that we have, you know, that we have approved to do work for council, whether there's been issues in previous contracts that we can sort of tighten up subsequent contracts or we'll keep that in mind when determining subsequent contracts.
Thank you, councillor. I understand the additional requirements.
Would that change, would that require a change of process to the tendering? And is that... how can we incorporate that without being... I understand the nature of wanting to know the information, but I don't want to be operational about what we're asking.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Look, the due diligence is undertaken in any case as part of the process. I think if I read the question right, there's a little bit of retrospectivity about the extent to which these suppliers back 10 years have their performance. That is a consideration in procurement. Obviously, if somebody hasn't performed well for council, that would be part of our due diligence inquiries as to getting them to do further works for us. But we'll have a look at this particular example.
Thank you.
Sorry, just to kind of, I guess, close the loop in terms of the item that you raised, deputy mayor, I think it's part of good process and good decision-making to see if, you know, anything did go wrong previously, what's changed and whether that warrants, you know, another chance or a second chance in subsequent procurement situations. Given that the questions are being taken on notice, can I move that we defer a decision on this item until those responses come back?
Councillor Caliendo, there's just some subsequent information that the acting CEO has that you might like to hear first.
Sure.
Thank you, councillor and deputy mayor. So in relation to conf 12, but page nine of the report, we can clearly see here that reference checks have been sought on all the players or applicants to the procurement, not only to the point of qualitative reference checks, but also their financial capacity was ranked against a corporate scorecard of the five offerers below. So in that regard, it appears that the due diligence was part of the procurement process to the satisfaction of the TEC, the Tender Evaluation Committee.
Sure, I understand that, but obviously the questions that I have were not immediately available and you've obviously opted to take them on notice and I don't feel, I guess, prepared that we have enough information until those responses come back. So that's why I'm moving to defer determination of this item until we can get further information.
I should put on record the deferral of the procurement will defer the programme of activity in the CBD to the extent that I think these pavers are also part of our lighting solution. And there'll be residual impacts on the business owners along the corridor in which we're laying these granite pavers.
Thank you. So we have a substantive motion, we have a foreshadowed motion for deferral. Is there anybody who would like to second the foreshadowed motion? Seconded by councillor Hall. Okay, so if there is no other discussion...
Can I just ask a question then? With the deferral, can you just explain that a little bit more as to what consequences that would have to the operational side of things? Are you going to be able to get it done or...
Thank you, councillor, through the acting CEO.
So we've got a price point and we've got a product being supplied. And we've scheduled activities and works with suppliers who would then lay the pavers. So all these have residual impacts on their programme of works if we defer the procurement of the very things that they're laying down in the ground. That is, they may not be available if there's a deferral or there could be consequential costs to any commercial arrangements into laying the pavers and supply of these things. If we defer the supply, there may be procurement challenges around their importation. There could be all kinds of issues that may change. Escalation is not one of them because we've got a set price, but there could be, for example, demurrage on ships bringing them in. There's a whole lot of challenges that could, which I can't quantify, I need to say that it won't be cheaper.
Thank you very much. It does say that this is a three-year contract term with two options of extending one. So a three-year term is going to keep us moving and if there are difficulties involved with it, it would be on the... It would be in regards to their being able to servicing the laying of the paving. Would that be right? Because they've either got the goods or they don't to supply us.
Thank you, council. I just might defer to the acting director of operations, who's probably got a more granular understanding of that issue.
Through the acting CEO, the other thing that needs to be taken into account in relation to the schedule or the programme of works is it will also impact the streetscape programme, which is also grant-funded. So there are milestones that we need to meet in order to meet our commitments and to then receive our instalment payments. Thank you.
Through the chair, just by deferring this, I believe we're probably inconveniencing community more than anything, by the sounds of things. The main corridor of Liverpool, Macquarie Street. So is this something that we're looking at doing? Do you want to inconvenience the people of Liverpool?
If there are no more questions, I believe there might be one with that finger, yes?
Yes, no. Can we cover ourselves just by saying in another point in here somewhere that council, that the contracts come back to council before they're extended so that we can thoroughly examine it to make sure that nothing did go wrong as to what councillor Caliendo is alerting us to?
Through the chair, I believe that's totally...
I just want to have a minute, please.
After that, it comes back just so that we make sure that we're covering... It's good, yeah, continue it on. It's not, it's just a safeguard. If we sign the contract, I think we're stuck with what we've got, which will delay the thing if they foul up somewhere, like they can't get the goods or what.
So councillor Rhodes, by putting in point five, you want some sort of report on the success of the projects brought back before those extensions?
Where we get the opportunity, that's better, where we get the opportunity, which says that it's an initial three-year contract, okay? Now, in view of the fact that we've got, it's all tied in to operations and into money that we've already received that we would have to hand back if we don't proceed with something now, it's a three-year contract with a two-year option and extending one year each at council's discretion. What I'm saying is after the initial three years, can we just have a report back and double-check on how things are going?
Acting CEO, sorry.
We are happy to do a review in three years' time as to the adequacy of others or otherwise of the supplier there selected for this procurement.
So if we change point five to a report to come back, you know, after the initial three-year contract period, you happy with that, councillor Rhodes?
Yes, happy with that. Thank you.
You happy with that, councillor Moon? Okay, so I will put the original motion first as moved by councillor Rhodes and councillor Moon. All those in favor? Against? I declare that carried, thank you. Would you like to be recorded against councillor Caliendo? Yes.
I would, deputy mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We'll now grab conf 13, which is booklet four, confidential booklet four. And is it memo to this as well? Conf 04. Can I just confirm there is a memo with that one?
I think there's an email that goes with that that I'd like a moment to pull up.
Can everyone confirm they've received that email? Please.
Could we have a printed copy, thanks?
Who would like a printed copy? Councillor Rhodes, anyone else? Councillor Hall? Who would like a printed copy? Councillor Rhodes, anyone else? Councillor Harrell? Conf 13, yep. Can I, can I recommend that we move that one to the end as well, please? Yep, moved, mayor, seconded, deputy mayor, all those in favour? Against, declared carried. Conf 14, which is in book four? No, it's not, couldn't be before, could it? Sorry, it says conf 14, oh, sorry, in addendum six. I think I've got that.
I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Moved, deputy mayor, seconded councillor Harrell. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff who came to the briefing session to go right through this report with us. It was very helpful, allowed us to make, you know, informed decisions. Thank you.
Just have a moment to read this, please.
Yep.
You've got to go a long way to get to the facts.
Let me know when you're ready, councillor.
What page is the recommendation on?
One, two, three, seven.
No, it doesn't say the tenders, the yes, I'm reading the recommendation. The top two tenders is identified in the body of this report. Can somebody tell me what page the two tenders are, the each tender has been put on? Who are the ten, who are the companies?
If you want to ask those questions, we have to go on a closed session.
Is that what it's about? So we're giving authority for the CEO to delegate with unknown.
One second. Yep, deputy mayor, one second. Councillor Rhodes, can you turn off your, your mic, please?
Thanks.
Councillor Rhodes, at the briefing session, it was all, was all mentioned. And it was, it's, yeah, it's very clear once the director finds the page.
No problem, thank you. Just couldn't find it. Couldn't find it in amongst all the. Are you going to put the motion?
Have you, are you satisfied?
Yes.
The CEO is just, is concerned about his vision.
What's wrong with it?
You can see it, the
Oh, bloody hell.
It actually is.
Yeah.
It actually is. Yes, councillor. Microphone, please. The thing is, didn't he actually sign it in his eye?
And, and?
No, unfortunately, no. I took it off, I took it off when I went to a cafe yesterday when I was outside the Liverpool area in the city. And then when I was, as soon as I walked out of the cafe, I was actually, this was, this was in, coming back from the radio interview with Ben Fordham. And I thought, oh, I don't need it, I don't need to hear, nobody really knows it. And then when I walked out of the cafe, straight away, they said to me, where's your medal? So we took a, they took a selfie with me with the medal on, it was right in my pocket.
And Mr Mayor, I'm still confused because it was under the jurisdiction of the previous CEO who's done a wonderful job.
And yes, under the, the, we get all get
The previous CEO that we've just terminated the employment of. So I'm very confused about that medal, Mr Mayor.
No, it's not that confusing. Are you still confused about this item we're voting on or are you ready to vote?
I said that 15 minutes ago, Mr Mayor, you were in your glory about your medal.
Our medal, um, our, it's our, no, no, that's not my medal.
It's, you've claimed it, Mr Mayor, it's around your neck and everybody thinks that it's your medal.
No. Doesn't say my name on it, it says our council. That's right. You take, take, take the bullets and take the glory, it's what happens.
Is it Tina's medal? Tina, please go up and get your medal.
She did come, she did come with me when we did come up and accept it, me, her and Clara, did Clara come up with this or just us two? I think Clara did come up as well, indeed.
Can you return the medal to the person who, the department that was responsible?
Return, return with the chains, it all comes in handy. All right. The, what is it, administrator, but I don't know. Let's see what happens. All right, all right, so conf zero fourteen, page one, two, three, seven is the recommendation. That was, you moved it, deputy mayor? Seconded councillor Harrell, correct. Now, is everyone satisfied with the information? Everyone ready? Any, is there any discussion? No, okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare that unanimous, it's tender?
I would like to be recorded as voting against, Mr Mayor.
Next item is conf fifteen. Page one, two, five, two. With the recommendation on page one, two, five, three. Anybody care to move a motion? Move councillor Hadid, seconded councillor Goodman? Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against? Is that you're voting against it, councillor Caliander?
I am, thank you for picking it up this time, Mayor.
I declare the motion carried. Next item is conf sixteen, page thirteen oh seven, recommendation thirteen ten, I'd like to move the motion, do I have a seconder? Seconded deputy mayor?
Sorry, Mayor, can, I need to discuss this, so we'll have to go into confidential. I have some questions.
So councillor, if you'd like to move into closed session, can I recommend that you quote, state the reasons why and move the motion to go on the closed session under section or part of the act, please?
It's going to affect the outcome of this HOA.
No, no, I get it, but you just, to go on the closed session, you've got to move.
I will rely on the deputy mayor to give me that information, I can't recall that.
Section ten A two C, I would think, ten A two D? Yeah, ten A two C and D.
So that will be section ten A two C or D?
C and D.
C and D.
Because I think you have to read it out, sorry.
Information that would if disclosed confer, confer a commercial advantage on a person with whom the council is conducting or propose to conduct business. D is commercial information of a confidential nature that would if disclosed, one prejudice the commercial position of the person who's supplied it or two confer a commercial advantage on a competitor of the council or three reveal a trade secret.
Wonderful. Do you have a seconder for that? Seconded deputy mayor? All right, there's a motion. Are we doing the other ones in closed session? Do we leave that to the, oh, let's just go, yes, let's do it. All right, moving to closed, it's moved, there's been a motion forward, I'll withdraw my motion of moving the motion, just for procedural, to make it easier. That we move into closed session, move councillor Harrell, seconded deputy mayor? Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declared carried. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move into closed session. Back online, okay, we're back online. Thank you, everyone. Whilst the council was in closed session, council resolved that item conf zero six, that council defer this matter to allow for further financial due diligence to demonstrate strategic alignment, closer alignment to direct negotiation guidelines. Two, receive a report back outlining a policy procedure improvement for direct negotiations for future scenarios. Three, reiterate its commitment to finalise this matter as soon as possible and its commitment to the project that will service the massive existing growing population that is unders serviced. Four, notes of risk that the purchaser may potentially withdraw from the sale. Five, to acknowledge the work, an effort to date undertaken by staff to satisfy the recommendations recorded within the property report on being put, the motion was carried. Now, I have to read out the other one as well that we did in closed session. Which is conf thirteen. So conf thirteen, whilst council was in closed session, council resolved to, one, authorize the CEO or delegate to resolve, no, sorry, the matter be deferred. Right, on being put, the motion was carried. Councillor McNaught, you had that motion of urgency that you wanted to raise, then councillor Harrell, you mentioned a potential motion of urgency. Yep, and we've got plan O nine, and I've got that one mayoral, that one mayoral minute. Thirty-four. All right, let's go. So it was urgent, I think we, we, we opened the matter yesterday, we deemed it urgent because of legal, the legal proceedings that's happening now and our situation with currently with the government. So I will hand over, hand over your councillor. What would you, what's your motion? Microphone, please.
That's okay. I think the director of City Futures microphone is still on, if you could turn it off, thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank the council staff for their input on this particularly, the, the council. I, I would, I would like to
Oh, sorry, my apologies, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry, sorry. Sorry, I'll be quick.
Malid, so I know you're leaving too, do you have that motion that I sent you? Oh, you've got it, beautiful, thank you. So thank you for the advice and I, as as, I won't say disappointed, I, you know, I know what has to be, has to be. So I would, I feel very strongly that the sentiments of what I wanted to get through are conveyed. And so I have proposed the motion that reads, as you can see there, support for Liverpool City Council staff. The background is that Liverpool City Council staff have been the subject of an Office of Local Government public report with personal information published publicly for the last seven days.
Okay, great. I just need to read back, sorry, we've resolved that issue that the director of City Futures raised, so it was actually resolved that council, one, this was, this was in closed session, so disregard the one that I said before. Regarding conf sixteen, one, that council accepts the terms of the heads of agreement between the party identified in the confidential report and Liverpool City Council, the change detailed in memo twenty, twenty-three July two thousand and twenty-four, reference two, three, eight, four, six, three, point two, zero, two, four. Two, agrees that if the agreement with the party identified in the confidential proceeds, a Chalka Centre will not be located in Liverpool Civic Place at this stage, and the council has reversed the previous council resolution slash decision. Three, authorizes council's chief executive officer or delegate to take all necessary steps to give effect to these resolutions consistent with the heads of agreement, including conducting any necessary negotiations and executing any required documents on being put, the motion was carried. All right, so we have, there's one mayoral minute and there's the other motion. Let me just deal with the mayoral minute because it is very important that it gets done. Which one? No, we were in public. We weren't in closed session. Oh, it was closed session? So do I need, do I need to read it out? They went out, but was it still being broadcast? For technical reasons? Oh, but we weren't in closed session. No, if it's technical cut. Yeah, we'll get to that, let me, let me, let me get with this one. Councillors, basically this is the, just ensuring that the CEOs, KPIs are put in place. The recommendation is that council endorses the twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five CEO performance agreements subject to the amendment set on the meeting minutes of second July of the panel. Yeah, the twenty-four, twenty-five CEO performance agreements to put in force and apply from immediately. Councillors, you've got the, I don't intend to read the report and all the preemptive eight points like any other report, that's an FYI for information. Yep, okay. Is there, so I'll put, does anyone have any discussion about this? No, okay, all right, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declared unanimous. Councillor Harrell, you mentioned you had an urgency motion.
Ah, yes, actually, I thought we could have added it to what we've just done, but no. The urgency motion, yes, I have, is that council installs a civic flag and council crest in the forecourt of Liverpool Civic Place. And the reason is it's part of the Capital Works project and this is to ensure that it gets added to that budget.
Happy to second it, Mr Mayor.
If that's urgent because of Capital Works programme, can, can you indulge me to add another point to it for the same reason? Of the urgency for the Capital Works programme? What I want to do is put forward, at the last meeting when we passed the budget, we put forward a million dollars to do change rooms. And I would like to put forward some suggestions for implementing that project and getting it started so we can get it onto the Capital Works programme.
Yep, sounds good. All right, yeah, so I guess, look, I'm happy, I'm happy to accept them as urgency motions. Number one, that, you know, ideally best practice is we get all the Capital Works projects in the budget. Number one, that, you know, ideally, best practice is we get all our Capital Works projects in the budget, rather than ad hoc throughout the year. However, doing it now as soon as possible after the budget is probably the best case scenario. You know, here we are, just, you know, one month after the budget is passed, so they can be planned. So, I'm happy to accept it from that. I also am mindful that, you know, caretaker mode is coming and I think, once again, that, you know, we should not have to wait till, you know, should there be an election in normal circumstances, till effectively October for a council to return to get importing capital works. So, if we, how about if we do an urgency motion, move Council Harrow, seconded Deputy Mayor, that says updates to the Capital Works programme? Now, just mindful that, mindful of, councillor, the Deputy Mayor, sorry, councillor Hadid, if you can just wait a moment, please. No, no, I'll fix it, I'll fix it, just wait, with the wording. Just mindful, councillor Harrow, that your one is new expenditure, right? Councillor McNault has already expenditure that's already been allocated in the budget, so it's more about getting into it. So, either one, either allocate a sum of money, or turn around and say, It's allowance, but you've got to, I guess, be more specific. Yeah. I think, just get on the, I think you said, my view is, come back with a number at a future meeting. Right? Cool. That way, this motion has no impact on the budget, anyway.
Just fix the motion, Mr Mayor.
So, yeah, let me, give me a moment, so, so you want a,
Flag and crest.
A flag and crest?
Yeah, it should be.
Council crests?
Yeah, the reason, install a civic flag and council crest.
When you say civic flag, do you want the Liverpool flag?
Yes.
Yes.
All the flag, mate. All of them.
The crest?
The crest, the crest is the important issue.
Can we install, install a freestanding crest in the, in the foyer, not the foyer, the forecourt?
Forecourt.
The forecourt?
Of Liverpool Civic Place. Unless you want to change the wording. I'm happy, as long as we recognise, get that thing up there. You work out the wording.
Place, that's point one, point number two is install a crest in Liverpool Civic Place forecourt.
Freestanding.
Freestanding. So, something like that, but bigger. Standing.
Freestanding.
Freestanding with some lights on it, public art, subject to what, considered public art these days.
You may, actually, you may have to install that in some kind of cabinet to,
They'll come up with something, no?
Safeguard vandalism, that kind of thing with adequate lighting, something like that.
Look, a government quarry, he's been there for how long now, he's all right? I don't think it gets vandalised often.
It's made out of stainless steel, though.
Maybe this should be made out of stainless steel, copper, copper, brass. Yes.
Ah, dear.
Yep, okay.
If you cannot put a light to it.
All right. Yeah, with lighting, power cords.
Whatever.
All right. And point three, receive a report back.
Prior to.
Receive a report back with regards to cost and details of the project.
Good.
All right, cool. So, the point four would now be councillor McNault's point? I'd just like to know why you're getting councillor McNaul? That the day we gave Ellen Russell a chair, she never came back.
That's it, it's just the chair now.
That's it.
Do you want to change point three first?
Can we, can we get you guys to work on the drafting, where I think the gist is there? Mindful of time, I'm sure you,
And my point four would be to, and I'm happy to read these all out, but in the interest of time, I won't, but there is a table bit.
I think we need to read them out quickly, just the names.
So, I would like to, and I will pass these on to you to type in a minute, but I will read them out. So, this is for the fifty thousand dollars towards change rooms with a particular focus on female-friendly,
Yeah, so this was the million dollars that was allocated last time?
In the budget that we,
And fifty grand, so there's twenty locations, yep.
So, Craig Park for athletics and rugby league, Scott Memorial Park for soccer and cricket, Hillier Oval for rugby league, Dwyer Oval for athletics, rugby union and school use, Whitlam Oval two for soccer and cricket, Whitlam Oval three and four for soccer and cricket, Hoxton Park Reserve for soccer and cricket, Petulio Oval for soccer, touch football, cricket, Ultimate Frisbee and cricket, twice. Hammondville Rugby League Park for rugby league, Hammondville Soccer for soccer.
Point of order.
Yes.
The CEO has a point of order, he takes offence to the word soccer.
We have, well, if I keep saying football, I'm going to have to, it's going to take me longer. In the interim, you can change it in the, yeah. Hammondville Soccer for soccer, Island Park for soccer, South Park for soccer and cricket, Jackie Osman Reserve for softball, Durant Oval for gridiron and soccer, Blamfield Oval for touch football and cricket, Woodward Park for netball, Jardine Park for soccer and Rosedale Oval for AFL and cricket. I'm not sure if that's actually twenty.
Yep, yes.
That's eighteen, Mr Mayor, and I'm sure we'll find two more to,
Yeah. Look, it's up to you, but I think ultimately, this is like, it's a, All right, if you can please fill out the form, thank you. All right. Yep, do you have a second, oh, it's already second, are you happy with that, councillor? Oh, good. There's no discussion? I'm sure there isn't, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, declare it unanimous. Well done, fantastic. A very civic and community-minded motion there. Maybe in future, you could have got, councillor Harrow, you could have had a crest on each one of those bathrooms and buildings if you wanted to. So, am I correct? I'm happy for anyone to correct me, there's only one item left? Plan O9? Plan O9 was the contributions.
It's only for noting. It's just for noting.
No, we did the airport, it was for the, it was for, no.
Just for noting.
But I don't think that was the intent, that was what you guys wanted.
Coming back to this twenty-four hours later, I think the intent of what we wanted was explained yesterday and I don't think we hit the intent of what we wanted with what was in the recommendation. And the suggestion was that maybe we could have a look at what other councils are doing. And I don't expect there's been a lot of movement in twenty-four hours reasonably.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I'll just refer to the substitute director of planning and compliance.
Thank you Acting CEO, through the Acting CEO, that's correct, councillor McNaul. This is a very difficult, this has been a very difficult resolution to work through. We've worked closely with the general counsel to get to this point in time. There is, as referenced in the report, there are two options. One option is to go and redo the whole contributions plan itself, which will take up to two years. The proposal that we have put forward is, does deliver on the original intent of the resolution, but more than happy to entertain any other further investigation should council endorse that.
What's the resolution, councillor, Deputy Mayor?
I need to look up the, because I don't think that it does deliver on the intent of the motion. I don't think that that necessarily does. And perhaps we might just ask for, with the intent of the motion, as I explained yesterday, and I don't know if it's captured, but it will be captured in the video, if we could perhaps come back at the very next available date, having had a look at what happens at Fairfield Council with their, the way that they give book.
Would it be not saying that the, that the the policy position, the policy position as adopted in previously, can only be activated should there be modifications, appropriate modifications to the development itself? To the CEO?
Thanks, I'll refer to the director of planning and compliance.
The wording that, sorry, through the CEO, the wording that could be considered would be potentially triggering a change in the contributions payable? That could be consideration. But in terms of the investigation of the Fairfield, the first home buyers grant, which I'm assuming is what we're referring to, more than happy to investigate that further.
So, do you want to add then as a point four, or would that be a point four, or would we do it as a? Okay. Yeah, so point two covers that, or do you say, do we add that on? That triggers a change in contributions? And the, or the policy can only be applied?
I just think that, like, even point one needs further explanation. Notes that contributions already paid to council cannot be refunded via a modification application that is only related to contributions, so.
Yep. But that's not, I think that was never the intent of the council to refund. I mean, there was never intention to refund. You can't refund. It was,
So, and, so, sorry, I need to find this in the book again, I mean, contributions already paid to, no, okay. That's, okay, I, sorry, I take that point, that's right. And there would be no circumstances under which we would have, would have wanted that to happen in our original motion anyway. Notes, any modification to the, sorry.
Not new.
No, because it's not new, it's not new, because this, for the city centre staff, it's applications that, they can be new, but they can also be not started yet. So, there may be an old DA that has not been, has not had the construction started yet.
Right, so if we've got a point two, and add to the end of that sentence, please, on point two? Notes any modification to the contribution, no, 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 I'm just reading it first, sorry. Notes any modification to the contribution conditions must be part of modification for the whole development that triggers,
Through the CEO, that triggers a change in the contributions payable?
Yep. Cool. Cool. So, so now, if we adopt this, I mean, someone can turn up tomorrow?
Sorry, last word, contributions.
Payable.
Payable.
Payable. P A Y A B L E. P A Y A B L E.
So, is that enough now, that can, someone can come up there and say, yep, I've got this building already approved, we want to start, I want to modify it and doing a whole bunch of stuff? The modification is good enough that it triggers a change through the CEO, that triggers a change warranted and the policy can be applied?
I might defer to the general counsel for comment.
I think that's broadly a statement of the legal position, I don't know that you need a policy about that.
So, I guess, as long as what we resolved a couple of months ago through the CEO is actually in place? I guess, is it in place?
Through the Acting CEO, yes, it has been in place from, as of the 16th of July. Yeah, so it is in place.
So, is that, that's for the entire resolution?
That's for all new development applications, whether they're secondary dwellings or whether they're development applications within the CBD.
My only concern is that we passed it on the 27th of March and have we had any secondary dwellings come in that we've collected contributions from in that time?
We have, yes.
So, how would we deal with that?
As the, as the report points out, we can't repay contributions paid.
I guess Deputy Mayor, in the scheme of it, is it, knowing that, yes, we made a resolution, but it does take, did take, what, from, was it March to June? It took some time to implement, which is fair and reasonable. Unless otherwise, because it really probably becomes complex to.
I'm just, oh, look, it's too, it's too difficult to do, somehow Fairfield does it differently, but it's,
Yo. Microphone, please.
Can we possibly investigate, or add a point four, investigate what neighbouring councils do and try and implement the same strategy?
Yep. So, we say,
To our policy?
So, can we say then, on point four then, notwithstanding point one, that council investigate what other councils do in particular Fairfield, with, in particular Fairfield Council? And report back? No, implement? Yeah, well, we've already resolved it though, that's the thing.
And I think we just probably need to, need to say at the end of that point four, for those DAs captured between the motion being passed and the 16th of July, because we're resolving to write the words new in the motion. Just say between the motion being passed and the 16th of July, wasn't it? Thank you. Yep, I'm happy with that.
All right, is the, so move councillor McNaul, do you have a second, sir? Sorry, I didn't realise.
Councillor Amun?
Samun? Any further discussion? No, okay. No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, I declare it unanimous. Is there anything else on the agenda that I've missed? There's four minutes? There's four minutes.
Mr Mayor, there's something shining in my eyes from you.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. What's the date today?
Twenty-seventh. Yes.
What's wrong, what, today's the 25th?
I had to, I had to wear him, there's something shining in my eye.
Ah, I see, sorry. Well, if, just before, just before closing, has everyone got the pecuniary interest forms in? Did I do one, did I give you one for Conf 12?
Everything you...
Let's maybe just double check. Um, yeah, look, and I'm, conf twelve, no. Um, in all seriousness, um, I wanna say that, um, just wanna say to everyone that should this be, um, should this be our last meeting, I just wanna thank everyone, uh, for all that you've done, my particular, my council colleagues, um, particular, um, my councillor, uh, liberal colleagues. Um, I cannot have wished for a better team for each and, um, to have you, uh, by my side for this whole period of time. Uh, it's been an honour and I hope I haven't let you down, and I apologise for, uh, the mistakes, um, uh, that I have made. Um, so I wanna thank you all very much. Uh, particularly wanna thank councillor, uh, Hadid, uh, for your guidance over the last sixteen years, um, and the role that you've played in my life in, in, um, in, in looking after me and teaching me, and for, more importantly, for your contribution, that what you've made, uh, to our, to our Liverpool community as a whole. And I, uh, I, I pray that this is not your last meeting, I pray that there's, there's another one there. If it is your last meeting, this has been a ten-hour meeting officially. Right? Um, so I, I wanna thank you very much. And likewise to councillor Harrell, I wanna, uh, note in your contribution, uh, to the Liverpool community for over this, over your sixteen years of services and elected official, uh, whilst we don't, we, um, we have agreed a lot more than we have actually disagreed when you look at it. Um, and I wanna thank you for you, and as well particularly, uh, Janice as well, for all the time and effort that you've given to make Liverpool better in the ways that you believe you have, uh, you definitely, you definitely have. Um, I will note that after sixteen years, you still don't know how to move into confidential session, so I'll just, uh, true, all right? No, no, no. Um, but really, uh, yeah, you're, you know, the, from, from going, from, uh, coming, joining council in two thousand and eight after administration, which we all did, and came in there and, uh, yeah, uh, potentially putting it back into administration. Um, so be, uh, maybe, maybe some irony there, but look, once again, I just wanna, uh, congratulate you both for your, your wonderful work and effort, um, in doing it. Uh, I know, and once councillor Goodman, I know you haven't, uh, re-nominated to run for the council election, and I can see you're running very quickly to get out of here and say, but thank you for all, all that you've done and, um, yeah, wonderful, and just all the staff, thank you. It's been a wonderful honour, it's been, it's been great. Thank you, give yourselves a round of applause. And I just wanna, uh, please note there for, for the, for the record, um, that, um, to the whole Liverpool community, I love you all, even those who bag me out, uh, on Facebook constantly, every day. Um, I pray that love may find, may be filled in your hearts, and that hate may be removed from it, um, not just towards myself or towards everyone, because hate is such a terrible, 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 terrible burden to carry around and such an absolute waste. But, um, I, I love you all, even those who hate me, I love you, I pray for you, and I love our community and I hope it becomes better for everyone. So thank you, everyone, and I'll declare the meeting closed.